Mr. Wickerett.
Called to honor the meeting of the Mayor and Board of Autumn February sixth, twenty twenty-four. If you will join me in invocation and pledge. And I would like to open our prayer tonight in honor of Mr. Bobby Ladner, who passed away a week and a half, two weeks ago. And I would like for y'all to join me in this prayer and pledge. Heavenly Father, as we come to unite, we thank you for your blessings, Father. We, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. And we ask, Father, that you would guide us through our decisions as we represent the citizens who elected us, Father. We ask that you'll bless all of our city employees, our, our county, our state, and our country, Father. And we ask that you'll remember the Ladner family as, as the lost of a loved one, Father. And we just hold him up to you and their family. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Patrick?
Present.
Pete?
Here.
Donald?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Tim?
Angie?
Here.
And Bernie?
Present.
All right, we have a full quorum tonight. We have no public hearings, no announcements, presentations, or proclamations. Do we have any amendments to the municipal docket? Here none. I'll move forward with the approval of the minutes of the Mayor and Board of Autumn on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular.
Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion in a couple of seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Planning and Development Commission, the January twentieth, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, regular. Need a motion in a second on that?
Don't move.
Motion seconds. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Next, we have Appeal, Steve McNally, Certificate of Resubdivisions, Alan Simmons, sixteen, uh, six thousand five, six thousand eleven, and six thousand fifteen, Daughter Road Commission, Planning Commission Meeting of One, eleven twenty-four. Need a motion in a second on this for discussion.
Motion.
All right, discussion. I want to go to our counsel forth. It seems that we've got some, some corrections that we need to be done. And I'm gonna allow our counsel to explain what, what actions need to be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board members, what occurred in the, in the procedural history of this case is that there has been an ongoing dispute between Mr. Simmons and Mr. McNally, who is the principal in, in VOMAC, the designated company that's in this dispute. There has been a dispute in Chancery Court for some time regarding the ownership of a particular parcel. The parcel is one of three parcels. That was the subject of Mr. Simmons's request to the Planning Commission in January to be re-subdivided or to be joined and made one parcel. The Planning Commission recommended that. That occurred on January the eleventh. Just from the standpoint of timing, on that Thursday, the following meeting was just a matter of five days later, on the sixteenth, I believe. The, this board approved the minutes of the Planning Commission and its recommendation to approve the re-subdivision of those three parcels into one. What we did not know and could not have known at that time is that Mr. McNally planned an appeal of the Planning Commission's recommendation to this board. And under our ordinance, has ten days to effectuate that appeal. He did so, timely, on January the eighteenth, prior to the ten days expiring. So had we known that appeal was going to be filed or reasonably anticipated, or had it been filed prior to our meeting, it is, it would have been the prudent thing for this board to consider approving the minutes of the Planning Commission, with the exception of the Simmons's application to re-subdivide those three parcels. The Chancery Court proceeding is ongoing, even as we sit here tonight. And the case has been argued before the Chancellor in Harrison County Chancery Court. Both parties have submitted briefs to the Chancellor to decide the issues to whether the tax sale to one of the parties or a purchase and sale. I don't know the exact nature of all the intricacies of the dispute, but I do know that it is currently before a Chancery Court judge in Harrison County. And ultimately, that judge will decide whether Mr. Simmons's claim of ownership is valid or whether VOMAC's claim of ownership is valid. So again, it is, it is that basis that my recommendation to this board is to, consistent with Mr. McNally's appeal tonight, to table the issue, to go back, first of all, and amend the minutes of the January sixteenth meeting to approve the Planning Commission's meeting, with the exception of the approval of Mr. Simmons's application to re-subdivide those three parcels and to table that action tonight until such time as the Chancery Court rules on the proper ownership. It would serve little purpose and, and public use for the city to grant Mr. Simmons, and I will say, in, in our, in our, not haste, but without the hindsight of twenty twenty vision, Mr. Simmons came in as he was legally right to do and applied for a building permit to proceed on the, on the approval, and that's been granted to him. So it is not without a hardship on Mr. Simmons that the, the recommendation is also that we issue a stop work order until the Chancery Court resolves the issue of ownership of this particular parcel. It would serve little purpose to allow Mr. Simmons to go forward and construction and development of a piece of property to only have the Chancery Court potentially rule that Mr. McNally and VOMAC have legal ownership of it. So that is, that is how we got to where we are, and that is my recommendation to the board tonight on this appeal.
You have substitute motion?
A question, Mr.?
I, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Donald, I didn't see you.
So, so, kinda going back to what's happened to us in the past, upon, and I'm playing hypothetical, but just a liability question I have. If the gentleman does win this, are we liable for interest or, or fees due on any loans upon this stop work order?
No, the city did not take any action in violation of its own ordinances.
Okay.
They may have been, from a timing standpoint, it, it would have been prudent, and it would have been a best practice, quite frankly. And it would have been my recommendation, had I realized that in January, that an appeal was forthcoming. In other words, we simply had a board meeting and approved the minutes of the Planning Commission before Mr. McNally's time for appeal ran. And, and so he, he filed his appeal two days later, but within the time limit, which, which makes our action just premature. Not illegal, it was just premature. Doesn't subject us to any damages. But, but clearly, we also don't want to give citizens the authority to move forward with something when we recognize there is a legal dispute that could change ownership of a piece of property within the city, which we, we approved Planning, Planning Commission approval.
Perfect.
It's just.
I just wanted to cover that, you know, cross that bridge while we, it was out there, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Make that motion?
Second.
Are there any other questions?
Substitute motion?
Substitute motion, that we revisit the Planning Commission's minutes, our meeting from two weeks ago?
January sixteenth.
January what?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, and approve them?
Mr. Brown, can I get your motion to be a motion to amend the previous minutes to table the Planning Commission's recommendation with respect to the Simmons's application only?
That's exactly what I was saying.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
That's what it sounded like. I was just making sure I was here.
We got a, we got a substitute motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right.
Let's go all be, the stop work order, well, do we have to do anything for that, or?
The city, the city builder, the city, um, building code officer can issue that. And, and I'm sure these folks may wanna speak to that issue. They're both here tonight, I understood. I know Mr. McNally's here, so.
We do have a second for discussion. Uh, and I know, Alan, you're here, and I wanna allow you to, to briefly state your, your statements here to, to the board.
Okay. Uh, yes, so the building permit was not issued because of the, of the re-subdivision. It's called subdivision, but it's really combining three parcels. So the building permit was not issued after that reason. So the building permit should stand alone, in my opinion. As I got the building permit, I ordered the building. Actually, it started being erected today. It will be finished tomorrow. It's a thirty by forty garage. It's, it's not a, you know, it's a seventeen thousand dollar garage shop that's just gonna store personal items. So to put a stop order on me would be, would not be, would not be good.
May I ask, Mr. Simmons, the location, the footprint of the garage, as you describe it, is it on the, does it, is it completely or partially on that parcel that is the dispute in Chancery Court?
It is.
And do you recognize that if the Chancery Court rules in VOMAC's favor, that you will have erected a building on their property and be subject to taking it down and, and damages and restoring to the property to its original condition?
I do, and I'm confident they're not gonna win.
I, I understand.
But I, I understand that. Yes, sir.
City had to take that into consideration with our, our previous action.
I don't wanna bore the board with all the details, but if, if you heard the arguments, it's just ridiculous.
I, I did not. I wasn't there. I just know that, been doing this long enough to know that anyone says they can predict what a court or jury's gonna do.
I will build and put it up at my own peril.
I understand.
All right, let me ask you a question, counsel. What do we do in this situation? Do we allow him, he, I mean, Mr. Simmons stated it'll be through tomorrow?
Correct.
Uh, the seventeen thousand dollar metal building?
Sir.
Uh, do we put a stop work order on it after it's completed tomorrow? Well, I mean, you know, he's willing to go forward with this, and then, you know, it's public records. He stated that, that he feels comfortable in, in what the, the case may be, that he may be putting up a, a building for the, for the other, for the opposition there.
Well, the, the, the dispute in Chancery Court is over who is the legal owner.
Right.
There's no question that Mr. Simmons produced to the city a valid deed, which indicated he is the owner. There is a dispute in Chancery Court over that. The city building officer was within his right to issue the building permit based on the application and the deed. So the city was within its rights, and, and as of this moment, Mr. Simmons is within his rights to proceed on it. That could change if the, if the Chancery Court rules in VOMAC's favor. That, the city doesn't have anything to do with that.
Right.
It's just, I, I wanted to be candid with everyone that if we do not do a stop work order, allow him to continue, he does so with considerable risk and, and his own peril.
Okay, so board, discussion on this. Y'all, y'all have thoughts, views, discussions on what, what needs to be done at this point in time? Do we move forward with the stop work order? Do we allow Mr. Simmons to go ahead and finish what he has that's completion tomorrow and then put a stop work order until this dispute is over? Or we allow it to go ahead? Donald?
In my opinion, I mean, we, we have legal counsel here for a reason. And I, I wholeheartedly feel like we're in the middle of a situation where we're not gonna win either way.
Right.
But I, I believe that our counsel is giving us solid advice, that he has researched, and I think we should take his advice and, and go in that direction with the stop work order. That's, that's my opinion, and that's the way I, I feel about it.
Just on the opposite side of that, uh, Simmons presented everything he needed to, to the building department. He is the legal owner, as we talk about right now, so I don't think we need to put a stop work order on the building.
I think I agree with Mikey. The, the property dispute has nothing to do with the city. We, we issued the permit based on what was given to us. And at this point, that's all we can really go by.
I will add, uh, that Mr. Simmons, just on public record, stated that he is willing to do this at his own peril, should it be ruled against him and not in his favor. So I'm, I'm concurring with Mikey and, uh, Tim. I think we, we don't need to issue a stop work order.
So, so going forward, should we wait till after the allotted appeal time to approve things like that? Would that be, is that typically?
The appeal was filed January eighteenth and is on, on tonight's agenda to go forward if, if the parties so desire to be heard before this board tonight. That would, that would, i- if after both parties are heard and the, on the appeal, the board, uh, decided to act differently than approving the Planning Commission's recommendation, then you would be in a similar position of having to go back and amend the January minutes to change that ruling. You could simp, you would simply come out with a different decision. I don't know whether you are or not on the appeal. You may hear the appeal and decide to not change anything, and the minutes would stay just say are. But it, it's my opinion, rather than potentially jump into a hole and have to dig yourself back out, it's better to never get in a hole. This issue is squarely before a chancellor right now, and it was my recommendation that we allow them to decide this legal dispute before we add to the, to the, to the problem, maybe.
Yeah. I'm, I'm kinda with.
Agree.
We got a motion, a second on the substitute motion, but before. Before, Alan, I would like to give the, the opposition there, Mr. McNally, an opportunity to.
Can I say one last thing? This motion was put in place last March, supposed to be settled in six months. We have not heard anything from the judge. This is an ongoing tactic from my opponents. They, they are, they are slowing everything down because I chose to go into the self-storage business, and that's their business. And they have, they have sued me, they have tried to rezon my own property. Now they're trying this crap. It's just on and on and on. And this is a tactic that they are using to discourage me from doing any further development. Now I'll remind you that I'm a citizen just like anybody else. I pay plenty of taxes in Long Beach. And the, the improvements that I'm doing are going to cost me more money, buy more taxes each and every year. And I'm, I'm, my efforts are to be a good citizen and to provide a, a business that provides a valuable service to my community and neighborhood. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Quick question before you sit down, sir. You said it was a garage? I, I just clear, making clear what, what you're building there. Is it an addition to the storage building?
It is not. It's, it's a thirty by forty shop that I am personally using about three or four of my units right now that I could be renting if I could vacate my personal items into this shop. Another note, it is going on an existing slab that has been there at least twenty or thirty years. The slab was there whenever I acquired the property. I acquired the property in two thousand and eleven. I paid the taxes going back to two thousand and eight. So that's how long I've owned this property. When I acquired the property, I acquired it through a tax sale from another person that bought the taxes. And from what I was told by the real estate agent that reached out to me, that all the people that were connected to that property, you'd have to note it, it's a land lock with an ingress egress easement. Okay, so there were three people that attached to that property. And so I was told by the real estate agent at that time, they were reaching out to all the people that have contiguous property to that property. And so if they wanted the property, why didn't they go get it at that time?
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McNally?
Good evening. I'm Owen McNally. I'm counsel for Stephen McNally. Gonna raise it way up.
Yeah, thank you.
I did not prepare to talk about a building permit issue or revoking a building permit. That was not on my radar. But what I came prepared to talk about tonight was due process, constitutional due process under the United States Constitution and the Mississippi Constitution. And as counsel for the city has already spoke about, both of these men claim ownership to sixty-eleven Daughter Road. And so both men have a property interest, property rights to sixty-eleven right now. A hearing was held in March of last year, and we're waiting on the court to decide. The briefs have been submitted. I don't know why it's taken so long, but the chancellor could have made a decision eight months ago, nine months ago. I don't know what the holdup is. I'm not counsel on that case. Patrick Sheehan is. But Mr. McNally hasn't done anything to delay the resolution of that matter. But I appeared on behalf of Mr. McNally at the Planning and Development Commission meeting and attempted to speak related to Mr. Simmons's certificate, um, application for certificate of re-subdivision and was not allowed to speak. And as my client has a property right, a property interest, he should have been allowed to speak based on his due process rights. And that's a very serious violation of due process for someone that has a property interest to be denied the right to speak when a government entity is about to take action that's going to affect that interest. And so I would say that the city's action in approving those minutes before the appeal was taken is unconstitutional. And any act going forward relating to the re-subdivision would be unconstitutional. And just very briefly, due process in the, the state of Mississippi means a meaningful opportunity to be heard at a meaningful time, to be heard at every critical stage where decisions being made related to these citizens' property. And Mr. McNally was denied that opportunity when he wasn't allowed to speak or be heard through counsel at the Planning and Development Commission meeting. And I've, I've listened to a great deal of talk about liability for the city. And one of the things that's come to my mind is if the Chancery Court rules in Mr. McNally's favor and decides that he has the superior claim to title to sixty-eleven Daughter Road, and the city goes ahead and approves the certificate of re-subdivision and unites sixty-eleven with the three other properties, the city will have taken action that slanders Mr. McNally's title. And that's a tort action in Mississippi. That was something that I would find very undesirable to be in that situation. And I would request that the city not go that route, but follow the, uh, recommendation of counsel for the city and table this matter until the Chancery Court rules.
Okay, all right, thank you. Y'all, any of y'all have any questions? All right, counsel, uh, based on the, the response, the recommendation is, and if I understand, and correct me if, because I'm certainly not right all the time, is to, to take out the action of the Planning and Development Commission, pass the rest of it. But also, do we allow Mr. Simmons to continue on since he says he's got one more day to have his building finished, knowing that he, he has outside contractors probably in town? And he is willing to take that risk? Do we table it, uh, take, uh, uh, do a stop work order? Or do we allow him to continue on through the completion of the erection of the building and no further action taken until the end, uh, until we get something from the, from Judge Parsons?
The, the problem, the, the question I have with allowing him to go forward is, and Mr. Gunlock may can shed some light on this. I understand that the, the garage, the small metal building which Mr. Simmons is erecting, is on the, is partially on the piece that's in dispute and partially on a piece that is not in dispute. Is that correct?
No, sir, it's all on the one.
It's a hundred percent on the piece that's in dispute.
You're correct.
Okay.
On it's in dispute.
Given that, my concern was that if we are not approving, if we're amending to not take up the Planning Commission, we have not re-subdivided and joined those three parcels. They're still separate parcels. Mr. Simmons showed up with a deed which, which satisfied the city. He had ownership of that particular parcel. And if he can, if he desires to go forward on it, the city does not have to stop work on it because he does have a, of, of ownership interest. He's demonstrated to the city he has ownership. Now that's disputed in another court. But we don't have to stop. If it was on two of those parcels, I would have some concerns because they're no longer re-subdivided if you, if you pass the amendment. It's on the one parcel, and he can do that if he so chooses. But he clearly does so at his own financial risk and peril, if the court rules against him.
Okay, now, we've had a substitute motion, and our original motion was, uh, correct me, was it?
I think the original one was to amend the minutes to take out the Planning Commission's recommendation on the re-subdivision and to issue a stop work. The amended mission, excuse me, motion was just to amend the minutes to take out the approval of the Simmons's application and not to issue a sub, a, a stop work, as I understand, Mr. Brown's amended motion.
That was it.
All right, y'all see the two motions. If we have a third, a, a second substitute, we're open for that. But I think, based on the recommendation, we've got the two options here in front of us. Is there a third option? To take no action?
Not that I have a recommendation on.
Okay, that's the two options. We've got a substitute motion in front of us with a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so we've got to take the substitute motion on the floor now. So if they have any discussion on the substitute motion?
I'll call for the vote.
All right, uh, call for the vote. I'm gonna do a roll call on this, so I'll make sure we get this right. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mikey?
Aye.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie? And Bernie?
Aye.
So the motion passes seven to oh. So, uh, we will be waiting then until, uh, we hear from Judge Parsons. Am I correct, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, to take up the recommendation of the Planning Commission, put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
On the re-subdivision only.
Of the re-subdivision?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's got nothing to do with the building permit at that point.
Okay, all right. Thank y'all. I'm, uh, thank y'all for being here. I know we've got a dilemma and a mess here, but we're gonna, we're gonna wait and see what goes on. All right, next, uh, we have Approval Doctor Claims Number oh-two-oh-six-two-four. Motion and second discussion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next unfinished business, we have none. New business, uh, uh, Special Event App, a Long Beach Community Development, Snow Wonderland?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Here none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Special Event App Fees and Insurance Waiver Request, Batman's Animal Rescue Foundation Dog Days of Winter.
Motion.
Second with discussion. They did submit insurance, so that, that is not applicable.
So insurance has been submitted?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that, uh, we approve, uh, waiving of the fees for this event.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second?
Yes.
Yeah, any more discussion? Wendy, you have something that, that's gonna change our mind to know?
Uh, I hope not. I was just gonna mention a couple of things about the insurance. I did do that. Just wasn't very happy about having to get it. But, um, I did do it as a good citizen, okay?
Well, we appreciate that. Well, we appreciate that.
And maybe after, I can have some discussions about why I wasn't happy about it.
Ms. Wagner, I'll go on the record and talk about that. When we involve, I know your organization. And I'm gonna say this, your organization does a lot of good for our police department, okay?
Yes. For the city.
You're right, 100%. And we 1,000% agree there. The problem that comes in is when we take off our personal feelings out of this and you put animals and children not knowing the care keeper, the caretakers of these animals. Meaning, you handle your animals probably better than the average citizen. We don't know what shows up.
Correct.
And here's where we run into a lot of gray area in speaking with our insurance agent.
Mm-hmm.
An average citizen, and I'll use an example. Mike Gunlock brings a animal, a pit bull, a Doberman, a German Shepherd. There's seven breeds. He shows up with that animal, and something happens. Most of the time, 99% of the time, that owner, its homeowner, will cover any damages, any incident under liability, unless it's one of those seven breeds. That is where we open up a huge liability of unknown. So with that being said, that's where a lot of this concern's coming from with that. And I'll be more than glad to sit down and discuss this with you in the future. But I wanted to know, I wanted you to know publicly where I'm coming from.
Correct. And just to, out of all due respect?
Yes, ma'am.
I have read ordinance 488?
Yes, ma'am.
And all of your amendments up to 576. And the city allows, at any given time, a dog that is on a leash on any of their city property?
I understand that.
City parks, town greens, fetch, all have kids and adults that are allowed to walk by those dogs. Events, you also allow dogs, like the boat parade, First Friday, dogs walk up and down the city on a regular basis on city property. What made my bake sale and silent auction different? I could have very well had said, no dogs allowed. Owners, come support Batman. But I could not have said, no dogs on your property because you don't have a sign that says that, nor does any of your ordinance say, no dogs allowed on any events. Duly noted?
100%.
So can you please explain to me then? Because there's not definition on the event application that says what a low hazard event is.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Last, I went to 10 different insurance companies. Most event insurance does not cover animals.
And there's a reason for that.
Exactly. I get that. The only requirement of the event application is to provide a certificate of liability. It does not prove that any insurance is covered for your animals, correct?
That, uh...
Yes. A certificate of liability says it's covered basic, a million dollars. It doesn't give you the policy behind it. So therefore, what are you looking for and what are you asking people like me to do? I feel like I'm in between a rock and a hard place. You allow dogs everywhere, and they are allowed to walk with other human beings and kids.
The events that you mentioned do not cover as far as a dog-friendly issue. It doesn't publicize, we will have nail clippings or whatever.
Okay.
You know, so that's where the city would take on the liability.
But that wasn't Batman.
But here's the other deal that you've also said.
Yes.
In your email, when you submitted the insurance?
Yes.
And you said it at the beginning?
I did.
You heard that it probably wouldn't get approved.
Yes.
But you also said you have not talked to any one of these aldermen. So that is you putting the cart before the horse, Wendy. And you know you've reached out to everybody on here. You're very vocal on Facebook as well, along with your other group. So for you to say that we were not gonna approve without even discussing with anybody up here?
I didn't.
Is truly wrong. Do you not agree with that?
I did not say that it, I said it came from the city, did it not?
You said that the aldermen? You said that the city would not approve.
The city.
Are we not the city?
There's other people in the city.
Are we not the forefathers that make the rules? Okay. Understand, I just wanted you to understand where I was coming from on this deal. We're gonna split hairs on this deal. Because I started this comment off with, I believe your organization is a very good one. But for your organization to ask the city to take on that kind of liability, I think the respect part would have been coming to this board and discuss it with us before the plans were made. And that's where I'm at, so.
And I, and I did, but I went on and got the insurance.
Appreciate your work on this.
And nothing was ever said on Facebook or anywhere else about this. I'm here in front of you, and I'm talking to you now, but I got the insurance. Again, I really still think you need to take a look at your own ordinances and your laws, please. Thank you.
We will be discussing that here.
I have one question. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Wendy, not to you, to Bob Paul. Is it my imagination, or do we not have a couple of signs at the town green that says, no pets allowed, no animals? We do. Because I think I tried to bring my animal down there, and my wife said, you can't look at that sign.
There's a sign that ever gets...
So we do have a sign there?
Yeah.
And I just wanted clarity, Wendy, because I thought I saw that.
I was there all the time.
I know, I know. It's basically ignored, but I thought I saw signs there. All right. Any more discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Wendy. Resignation Library Board, Ms. Christine McCummins. Motion is second. Discussion? I would like to say thank you, Christine, for serving. We appreciate your taking the time to do this job. And we wish you well and hope that you will look at other volunteer positions with us. So we really appreciate it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, Appointment Gulf Regional Planning Commission?
Nope. School board.
I skipped one. School board. Let me go back to that. Got a school board, trustee appointment. And we only received one application. And Patrick will have to excuse himself since he's employed by the Long Beach School District. So let the record show that Patrick has left the room, sitting with Elvis.
Oh, the chairman?
Chapman.
Who is it?
It's Thomas Carpenter. He was the former...
He is a current board member. We only received the one application for the job. So I entertain a motion to second.
Motion to approve.
Tom Carpenter. And we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We could bring back in Patrick?
Do we really want to?
Okay. Now, we could go to the Appointment Gulf Regional Planning Commission Board Member. I have, I have, I serve as the mayor. I serve on that board, and I would like to continue. I don't know what I can speak for the next mayor, but I would like to continue on in that form. So I didn't think...
So we need to vote for you.
You gotta vote for me or vote for, appoint one of y'all?
I make a motion to reappoint the mayor.
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Just a housekeeping issue. What is the time?
Is it three-year term?
No. The term, is it February to February, March to March, for four years? How's that?
It's a three-year term.
Three-year term.
And it'll be from date of this appointment. Am I correct?
I just didn't know if...
March 1st.
March 1st, yeah.
I didn't know if it coincides with our appointments for other boards and things like that. That's due to the county.
Right. Due to the commission, because there's, it covers so many of the southern counties.
Got it. And that's what I was getting at.
That's, you know, and they're staggering terms to it. So, and, you know. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank y'all for your trust and continuing trust in me. Grant, grant award agreement, Mississippi Library Commission, Children's Development. Motion, second, discussion?
No move. Second.
A motion, second. Any discussion? Denise is not here, is she?
No, she was not able to attend in that.
Right. Okay. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Grant application, HUD Gateway Project. Any motion, second, discussion?
Motion. Second.
Kenny?
This is the application that we have to submit to get the 4.3 million dollars for the Gateway Project. So this is our first step in getting our grant agreement.
And we had a teleconference last week on Thursday, I think it was. And we went through the process with those in DC and in Atlanta to move forward with this. And this is the first step for us. So we have a motion, second. Do we have any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion granted, or passes? Grant application for the NRCS Nicholson Avenue Drainage?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have ordinance 668 Cemetery Amendment. Motion, second, discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a couple seconds, discussion?
Just wanna say thanks, Donald and Stacy and whoever was involved. If you look at the ordinance, we're right in line with all the other cities, and I really think it's a good ordinance.
Mike, the only correction I would say is taking my name out of that. Most of the work was Stacy Dahl.
Okay.
She deserves it all. Yeah.
We'll do that.
I'm being honest.
Stacy, if you're watching, we corrected that, and we thank you.
I'm not taking the credit for somebody else.
Yeah. It's a good ordinance, I think, so. But I did stay at the Holiday Inn Express, and our council's here to save it, so. All those in favor?
We need a roll call, because it's an ordinance.
Okay. Roll call, that's right. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have another ordinance, 669 Sidewalk Amendment. Motion, second, discussion?
Motion, second.
Okay. This ordinance, for those who are intents and watching, it, if you have a, want a waiver, you go to the Planning and Development Commission. And if they grant the waiver, it's passed up to us, and there's no in-loof fee attached to a waiver at this time. So that's what the ordinance change is.
There's also, though, it's, you're not getting a waiver just because you want a waiver. There's got to be reasons, correct?
Got to be a reasonable reason to seek that waiver. You're in a neighborhood that has no sidewalks. You know, that's a worthy way.
Right.
Any more discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
That's another roll call.
Another roll call, I'm sorry. Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
And Bernie?
Aye.
And it still passed.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Special Event Polishing Revision. Alderman Frazier, new motion, second, discussion?
Motion.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is on our special events application, I think we need to add a couple of things in here that's been brought up. Number one is that nowhere in there, if it's, if the event is held on the school property, does it say that they, that the applicant has to go and get approval from the school board? I think that wording needs to be added. I also think, for example, I, and I may be overstepping my boundaries as far as like Saturday night, the weather with the parade. I think we need to put some kind of wording in there with a public event down in our town green that gives Billy and Chief Skelly the authority to cancel the event. And I think we need to have that in writing on the applicant, application. And then, it's just come up tonight. If you guys want to add anything, any corrections about the insurance in there, you know, if we waive the insurance, we're basically taking on the responsibility of it being a city-sponsored event. Now, I have no problem either way, but the board needs to be aware of, if, you know, case by case, if you guys want it that way, I'm just going with the fly. I didn't think about that one at the time. I had the first two, but, you know, that's, that third one is up to the board. But I think we need, 100% need the school district's approval and the wordage about the chief of police or the fire chief having the authority to cancel due to safety.
And let me just add briefly, the...
Yes, sir.
The fire chief is also the emergency management director for the city. And, you know, he has to take into consideration health concerns and such things like that. I just wanna make that statement. I'm not saying yea or nay. So do you want to put it together, or?
I can make those...
Donald?
Yes, and I'll bring them back.
Kenny will make the...
I have a question. How far in advance are you gonna give them to cancel before you cancel?
I don't...
Weather could pop up at any time.
Yeah.
We had a problem with the Jingle Bell Run. I thought it should be canceled, and they would not cancel. I pulled our officers. We did not do traffic for the run, and they insisted they were still running.
Okay. Well, I didn't know whether there was gonna be a certain amount of time. You had to give them before you canceled it, or it just, that's a...
Just weather permitting, I think.
Based on what I'm hearing, chief, you would, you would like that responsibility. You would, it would be beneficial for you to have that authority, in your opinion? Yeah.
I think it goes...
I mean, both, either of you or both of you?
Conjunction.
I think what, the way we normally play it is whoever is in charge of the event, we give them the first opportunity to look at everything, what's going on. Normally, if they'll ask us, or if they ask our opinion, that's when we insert our opinion on it, unless there's gonna be danger for our personnel.
Yeah.
Once we get to the point where our personnel are in danger, we're going to stop it anyway. Or at least our people being involved.
Right, well, and that would be my concern is like with the Jingle Bell Run, if y'all said our officer not going to Mardi Gras and you pull your officers from Mardi Gras and they still run the parade with no, you know, that would be the concern. So I mean, you never know when 40 mile an hour winds are going to pop up here. It could happen in five minutes.
I spoke to Sawyer Walters the other night before the parade and our, we watched the weather together and we took a shot at it.
And it worked out good.
It did.
Yeah, and, but if it's, if it's something concerning, I, I think that we already have the authority to stop it.
But was the Jingle Bell Run an issue where your personnel would have been endangered, Chief?
There was lightning, we pulled our personnel, I mean, we were at the town green and lightning hit right here on this tower.
We had asked for a one-hour wait, but in his, in his defense, what he was saying was he was not leaving his people out. So we had insurance and we asked for a one-hour delay and we're not given it. And they gave us the decision to make, we, we ran an hour late and it, it was great. There was no, no rain or anything. We just asked for an hour and didn't get that hour and everything passed over.
So we, or you go, once again, Kenny, you go right, put all this in and let it sort out?
I can put all these changes and bring it back before y'all.
I'd like to, I guess, make a substitute motion that we advise Kenny and City Hall to give us a rough draft of the, for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? All right, we got a motions, substitute motion and second to have Kenny and City Clerk redraft the changes that's been talked about and bring back. Any more discussions? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have harbor signage discussion, Alderman Brown.
So, since we have our entrance to the harbor completed on the west side, I'd like to see if everybody or this board would be in agreeance to move the bait shop sign to the east side, because it really takes away from our entrance. And we're talking about just moving it, I don't know, 30 or 40 feet.
Come back to the east or to the west?
Just to the east, to the, from the west to the east.
West side of the Cleveland Avenue entrance to the east side of the Cleveland Avenue entrance.
Correct.
That's what I thought you were saying.
Yes.
Second.
I've got something else.
Have we talked, they're good with it, the bait shop?
Well, I mean, that's-
It's advertising for them.
Actually, that's a city sign, I'm almost positive, yes, because, I mean, we had, correct, David? Do you know, is that the city sign?
I do not know. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Harry. Did you know, Harry? Is that a city sign, or is that the bait shop sign?
I believe that's a bait shop sign.
I just thought they had charters before Katrina and all that.
That was a different sign out there and I think that sign was furnished by the bait shop after.
Okay. So, will you touch base with the bait shop, see if they're okay with us moving across the street? Across the roadway?
Ask them tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. And also on another thing, Mike, the, going into the harbor of Jeff Davis, we got the no laundering, speed limit sign, the poles bent and all the signs looked like Katrina hit them. Can we do something with that?
Absolutely.
Because I know, uh, our, our Gateway Project, that was not included in that.
I'll get them fixed.
Thank you. So that's my motion, though, is to move it, unless y'all want to wait till-
Still got a motion and second on that. Do we have any further discussion? And I would still like for-
Wait on the harbor sign?
That's what I was-
Well, make the motion if they're, if they're okay with it.
Signs on this west side until we get with the bait shop and-
Well, you want to make it, if they're fine, if they don't care, can you make the motion?
Yes.
If they don't care, we'll go ahead and do it.
And then they're granted.
And then they're approved.
If not, we'll work with them and-
That's a substitute motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
And we have a second on that, so we're going to go ahead and approve the movement and sign per the approval of the bait shop owners, since it's their sign, as we think it is right now. So, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have striking, striping of Jeff Davis Avenue, Alderman Brown. A motion, second discussion?
So moved, second discussion. So, I know we sent a resolution to Mr. Ladner, Supervisor Ladner, to, to stripe Mitchell Road and by the way, it's striped. But I was going to try to piggyback off of that to try to get the striping. We don't need parking striping. We need the center road striped and we need the crosswalks striped where it stopped. So I'd like to see if we could, I guess, do another resolution to Mr. Ladner and see if they could provide the equipment and manpower to stripe the center line and the crosswalks.
Cleveland and Jeff Davis? Because Cleveland needs it coming out of that harbor, nobody-
No, this is all of Jeff Davis, is what I'm talking about.
I know, but just-
But that should be on the, is that?
We need something at Cleveland also, I mean, not the whole road, but just where people need it. That's a turn lane, this is coming out of the harbor, this is turned. Can we get all of that done at one time?
I don't know where, you're talking, on the harbor side or the Cleveland Avenue sign? Because on the harbor side, you do have the striping there.
So, the county is-
You can't see it.
Doing some parking spaces for us at the school district out in front of the gym that would require, they're going to have to stripe. Maybe we could ask if when they do that, they could swing while they're out and they're here.
Well, let's just see, let them look at the intersection of Cleveland too and, and on the harbor side. See if we can get, we need a resolution for that, correct?
Yeah, we'll have to. And, and the further discussion, you know, we had someone fall and break their arm. It tripped over a loose or raised brick on the crossings where the bricks are within the sidewalk. Courtney and I got out and walked the whole area where those bricks are and I think we noted eight or 10 places that needed to be addressed. I want to bring that to your attention when I'll have it put on the next agenda for us to look at, we can get with, with David and maybe have him look at a few of them that, that shows what is all is happening with them and give us an opinion from him on the, as a, as our city engineer to give us some recommendations on what we do with that. And I'm just going to mention that right now. But right, right now, we're going to have a, we have a first and second for, for a resolution vote to ask Dr. Ladner, Supervisor District Three, our district, to stripe Jeff Davis Avenue and, and Cleveland Avenue, south into Cleveland at, at Highway 90.
And the crosswalks.
And the crosswalks, and the crosswalks here on Jeff Davis. I would like to add one more thing to it, you know, we all talk about a vote code. It's just a sealer that's put on, on the roads. I think that, that we should consider sealing Jeff Davis Avenue. And I would like to, to see if our engineer could give us a cost on sealing the whole thing and, and, and give us advice on whether we should go ahead and seal the parking lots at the same time. And then allow us to ask when we send this to Dr. LaRosa, uh, Dr., I'm going to my medical doctor, Dr. Ladner, that if the, if David finds that if we want to do the vote code, that we also do the parking lots and restripe the parking lot also. That could be something we could discuss at the board, next board meeting. But I think in the letter that, of the resolution, we asked for all of that and then once it's, it's approved or disapproved by the board, if it's disapproved, we could withdraw those areas that we're not willing to do at this time. But go ahead and get that within the full resolution.
All right.
So is that, uh-
That was the motion.
That was the motion to include that action, that was the second, I don't remember who seconded it.
I did.
That was Pete and Mike.
Pete and Mike did it, okay. All right, so that's the motion, second. We have any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, resolution?
Aye.
Just to draft the resolution.
Draft the resolution, okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
But thank you.
Thank y'all. Man, my head's sweating tonight. All right, next, we have removal of tuba con trees on Alicia Drive. I need a motion, second, allow, allow Joe to-
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion, second, allow Joe, uh, Joe, Mike to speak to this. And Bernie, if you want to speak to what, what we, you know, Bernie and I went out there and met with Mr. Duval, we found, we found the problems, areas there. And we met with Mike and Joe on the scene and they have come up with a recommendation to us at a cost here. So I wanted to bring it to the board and discuss this. Mike, they have want, went on and there's, there's a drainage ditch there. The tree is just outside a drainage ditch and so there's two of them there. So Mike, do you have anything you could offer us for support of this?
I mean, the trees in the way of us being able to, sorry. The trees are kind of there in, in the way of us maintaining that ditch. It kind of causes issues with the, the level of it. The owner of Oakmont, he's fine with it being removed.
And we have, we, we need to go ahead and continue the drainage further to the west over to Seal Avenue. The problem there and like we have in most of Long Beach, we're all flat. So there's not a lot of slope you get there from where we're talking about to Seal Avenue. So it's going to have to be carefully dug and to drain without creating a retention pond in there, which we don't need. We have permission for landowners who have put fences across our easement and ditch to be able to remove those and continue with that. But we have a cost of, I think it was like, what, $1,600 or?
$1,675.
$1,675.
$1,675.
Two trees.
Two trees.
To remove both the trees and allow them to go ahead and do the, do the-
It is definitely on city easement, correct?
Yes.
No private property.
No, it's all easement.
Just, and this is FYI, I know since I've been on the board, we have done that once or twice before. We did it on an oak tree, on an easement that was going to fall and I can't remember where it was at, so.
We've taken out several over the years in the evenings.
When it's, you know, this tree's, one of the trees where it's leaning, it's going to take out power pole, uh, power service to the house and probably hit the house too.
Yeah, and one of them's leaning over the, you know, over and property on Oakmont. So that's, that's the worst one, but both of them need to be removed.
We've got a hazard situation, it's good to go, it would affect the landowners, but we all, we really need to do it to be able to get our drainage straightened out. And we've concentrated on drainage in my first and certainly into this second administration. So we have a motion and a second, is any, to approve the removal of these two trees to allow the drainage to be done properly. We have any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Slab removal at St. Patrick's Park, Alderman Bennett?
Um, actually, it's not a removal. So I had a, hang on one second, let me make sure I don't say his name wrong. So Lance Strahan reached out to me. Basically, what he was wanting to do is he wants to go and buy like a pickleball net and just put it on there and he was going to donate and everything and just, if that was okay with the city. So, I don't know.
And paint the slab to be a pickleball.
I mean, I think there were some cracks and stuff that they were going to kind of go in there and just fix and do it, but just, they're going to donate everything and do everything. Just wondering if they were good to do it.
So the removal-
Have they been in touch with you? I, I, I mean, personally, I'd like to see them go through the recreation department.
The only, the only problem we might have down there is when we had basketball courts down there, people were going down there with lights at night and they were playing at nights, at night and the neighbors were complaining. This was before Katrina, but I just want you to be aware that if they do put nets down there and they start playing at night, we may have an issue.
So do we have any signage down there that park closes at dark?
Yep, well, we will, we have to.
Okay. What about the Donald liability insurance?
If it's, if it's part of the city's control, it's, it's listed on our liability and we would be covered.
Is under our control by?
It is, St. Patrick's Park.
It's under our control.
Then it's covered under our liability, just like the, the senior center basketball, any other basketball courts or baseball fields.
I'm just, I'd make the motion to let them proceed, yeah. Coordinate through, coordinate through. Coordinate through by them. And I think they're going to do like a temporary, not like a, just like a temporary net that can be taken down and boxed up and stuff, but.
I'll second that.
I commend the-
So we got a motion and second.
Stepping up and doing that.
Do what, Donald?
Saying, you know, I appreciate them stepping up and doing that.
I, I, I agree 100%. Don, um, Mikey and I were just talking about, you know, we're working on pickleball, trying to get money for pickleball courts and we're hoping it'll still come through for us to build some. And I think it's, you know, it's something we got to be conscious of. So, motion and second for us, any further discussion? Here none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, we have contract, uh, contract amendment, Long Beach Improvement and Decor LLC. Motion second for approval and discussion?
Motion.
So moved. I get a motion, second discussion. This is something that we talked about a few months back, I think probably in November or December, about hiring Endicore to work on projects as our construction management team also. And this is a change where we're adding in the, the bulkheads of the south, southeastern bulkhead, the eastern bulkhead, the Gateway Project. And the Gateway Project, they have been working on already based on the previous contract and this is adjustment to what they've got. And the reason is that we're, we're mixing and matching state funds with federal funds and we've got to be careful how those are managed and faced up and, and presented to Kenny for us to not mismanage the funds. So just ask for approval on this. We have any discussion?
I have a question. Are you with that, Corbin, back? Have a question for you. You stay right there, are we go get updates? I know the, I know we've been in touch with David on the harbor, the progress of the harbor. Can we get an update from Endicore or whoever, like monthly or something to keep the, so we can keep our people involved?
Once we pass this.
Just every, every street and start, uh, every, every two weeks, have an update.
Great.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Two weeks, I've talked to everyone listening today about that to make sure that once this is taken care of, they, they've already been in talks with, with, with Overstreet. So this will give them a, a lot more leeway and thought.
Justin, would that be something like, would y'all use Procore like, that, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so we'll give everybody access to Procore.
So, and just to explain, like with the school building, Procore, like every few days or even more regular than that, like they take pictures of the work that's being done. There's checklist of, you know, what's going on, so you can get on at any time and see.
And that gives the, that gives the full board what we need. So any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Next, the, the mayor's office, I wanted to bring on one thing. We've had discussion, I know Mikey and I have been discussing on it with David. A rumor that Landshapers was going out of business and that concerned us about our contract with them to do our paving. We received a letter and I think y'all have all got this letter before you. David has confidence based on a, a talk that they have. They, they, they are on the market to be sold, but their intention is to still honor that. You know, if it's sold tomorrow with our honor be there, I don't know. But I think we need to move forward with our paving projects. So I would have, entertain a motion and second to move forward with Landshapers so we could continue with our paving project. I get a motion and second for any further.
So moved.
And I got a motion and second for any further discussion. This will allow us to go ahead and, and have David come to the next meeting with, with proposed paving and, and what we need to do and when we can start.
I, I can do, I think at the last meeting, y'all had actually authorized some of the roads to proceed. So I could go forward with that if that would be your motion to, okay.
Go ahead and, what the board has approved, based on that approval and what we've heard here, to go ahead and move forward with it and then we could look at a second phase if, if needed.
Right.
Okay? So, actually, we don't need a motion and second on, we just had it for discussion.
Right.
That, I felt like there was something else I need to meet, to... Yes, 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 thank you. Courtney just reminded me, our parade. I know we, we had lack of authority to stop the parade, but I will say this, as the parade did roll, I would like to commend our employees. I would like to really commend our public works employees. I don't know if you saw it, but when the parade was over, they were out there cleaning up Jeff Davis, our, Bob Paul, all, you know, your folks, everybody that, that had a part in doing that. You know, I know the police department's out there, I know the, the fire department, you know, they get their shiny red trucks out there. They have people involved, they're involved with every aspect of it. But, but for Bob and, and Mike, your employees, will y'all share our appreciation to what they did? I had somebody send me something that complained that the streets wasn't clean on Saturday night. Well, it was raining and those guys were out there doing that. And then Sunday, they got out and worked again. And then Monday morning, as you drove our streets, they were cleaned. And I can't begin to thank y'all enough for your efforts. It's always like that, y'all get out and do that. And I want to recognize y'all and everyone in both of y'all's departments for a job well done. So, thank y'all, appreciate y'all and please continue that good work. That's, uh, any comments, any thoughts? All right, that's all I have. Personnel, we have fire department resignation one, new hire one and part-time hire.
So moved.
Pete has to recuse himself.
That's right, I'm sorry, Pete, Pete has two, maybe, I don't know, two, two real sons. I don't know how, but no, he has two firefighters he needs to work for. So we got a motion and a second. Any discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries? Okay.
Oh, Bernie had made a motion when we did that.
Okay, all right. Okay, alright. City clerk, uh, award newspaper pub- publication, twenty twenty-four, motion and second for approval?
No move.
Got a second? Did I hear one? I missed it. Y'all, I'm sorry. Uh, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fire department, uh, chief, can you give us?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I got, I have three things that I want to address and just give an update. Uh, Station Three is very close to being finished. Um, what our plan is, uh, they did a punch list on it yesterday. So once they give us the go-ahead of, uh, final completion, our plan is to go ahead and move in and then we'll do some type of, uh, opening, grand opening ceremony on it. Uh, that'll be coming up and we'll let everybody know.
Coordinate through, uh, Courtney to make sure we get everything right.
Right.
Not that you couldn't do it right, but we need to be able to get it out.
I can't do it right. I do need her help. Um, the other thing was, um, I spoke to council before the meeting. Uh, it looks like, uh, we'll be in negotiations with, uh, Acadian Ambulance Service tomorrow at nine o'clock. We'll start that meeting. Um, once we get that hammered out, I'm gonna bring a copy to him and make sure everything, uh, looks good for the city. Um, once we all get that done, hopefully we can move forward on it. Uh, the last thing I want to talk to you about is that we are past our hundred and eighty day mark with FEMA on our appeal. Um, we did reach out to, uh, Mema, Ms. Diane Sager, and she sent, uh, the information, um, about our next step. Uh, I was in meeting most of the day, still dealing with this ambulance service, uh, issue. Um, hopefully tomorrow, if I get finished in time with that, I can read the, uh, read the instructions of, of what our next move is and, uh, get that out to y'all where you can read, uh, about what, what they say. And y'all can make a decision on how y'all want to go.
So do you, you, did you get word back from FEMA on our appeal?
I have not. That's what I'm saying.
As Mema, Mema hasn't either.
Mema hasn't either.
So.
We're past our hundred and eighty day mark. It gives us, uh, a right to ask for the non-FEMA board to make a judgment on this thing. Or there's another option or two there, but, but I didn't get to read it all, Mayor. I didn't have time. I got the email late yesterday and have been dealing with this other today. But, uh, I want to be, I want to read it and I want to be clear when I give y'all your options.
Yeah, and, and bring forth all the options as, as you understand them. Uh, get with Andecor.
I will. I have already.
Make sure, you know, I think we allow them to work, uh, do the, the, the hard work that we've hired them to do, uh, to let you and, and then to brief you on what, what each step, uh, of, of action that could be taken and what we need to do. Work through them to make sure they get this done and, and have it back for us. If we need to have a special call meeting to make sure we're within a time limit or if we could delay it till the next board meeting or if we could do action, uh, through, uh, and, and, uh.
Do a poll?
Yeah, do a poll of the board.
Right, right. And I, I want to have all of that information where y'all can have it and make your decision on it.
Ratify.
Yeah. You know, we, if we do that, you know, and we, we, we poll the board, then we come back and ratify their decision at the next meeting.
Okay. I, I just wanted you to know where we were.
Okay. Alright, you anything else?
Everything else good.
Okay.
If I got a question real quick, do you feel that a non-FEMA board is advantageous to us in this situation?
They have been in the past.
They have been. The, all the words I get from people that have dealt with this, this can be an advantage to the city.
Good.
Um, but, uh, like I said, there are several different options and I want y'all to know all of them, uh, before any decisions made.
Okay. Alright, uh, next we have police department, commercial security agreement, all safe technologies, uh, motion and second for discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, discussion, council. You had some concerns, I think, with the contract.
Mr. Mayor and board members, I spoke with, uh, chief prior to the meeting that reviewed the, uh, agreement. There are several parts of the agreement which concern me. There's one that we're prohibited from agreeing to regarding, uh, binding arbitration in, under the laws of, I believe it was New Jersey. But, uh, that language has to be amended and deleted. I'd like to request that the board table this agreement till I can speak with, uh, their representatives and see if we can get the agreement cleaned up a little bit.
Okay.
No move?
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have engineering, uh, award north lane lift station improvements, LJ Construction. We've got a, a, a letter which stands with some, from David, that stands with some, uh, erected, uh, uh, piping.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, there is no major issues with this company, LJ, that we've used them before.
That's right.
Uh, so I need a motion and second for approval.
No move. Second.
A discussion?
Remind me what project they did. It wasn't, was it on Klondike?
Uh, well, they actually, they, they did build a pump station. They rebuilt a pump station on Klondike at the ballfields there in some forest main. They've done several other projects for the city.
That, that is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And, uh, it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollar project on this lift station. So we've got motion and second. Uh, any further discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have a twenty twenty-four tip funding request. Uh, there are several projects here. Uh, David, uh, let me get a motion second discussion.
No move?
Second discussion.
Alright, go ahead.
I'd like to do a substitute motion that we table this until the next m- board meeting because this is falls right in line with our bond money. We're trying to look to do the other projects. And we have some projects here that I'm looking at, uh, about ten that we've already not committed to, but we've already talked about some bond money and eliminating, not eliminating, to table some of them. And I think some of these projects could be right in line with tabling them. So.
Alright, David, if we ta- we table the next meeting, that still leaves us, leaves us plenty of time.
I believe that'll give us still plenty of time if we could get it in the next meeting.
Need a confident answer, not a belief.
Well, the, the applications aren't due until March. I think it's mid-March, so we've got time.
Alright, thank you. We have any further discussion on this?
Yeah, and just make sure we know what our portion is listed out.
Oh, yeah, on everything here that he gave us the other day and this new one is twenty percent match.
Most of them ninety percent.
I want to call them, listing it out.
Okay.
Like, like you do on the, this first one. He did.
Can do.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have C, Clower, uh, Kirkendall Lift Station Improvements, motion and second discussion?
No move?
Second.
Uh, discussion. I think it's self-explanatory in our letter. Uh, we've got a. David, do you need to clarify anything? Anybody gave you questions?
I will offer any, any information.
Everything's in writing there.
Okay.
Make an option.
Hmm?
I need to make a choice because there's three options.
It was more they were asking us to pay for that. Wasn't they asking us to pay for that right away?
We had approached the, the, the school district about this. They indicated they were willing to give an easement. They said, hey, we're, we're considering creating a parking lot here or, or some parking spaces on the front side of the Quarles property. And just said if, if the city would be willing to, in the area where you have to work, put it back with limestone, which would save them that area when they go to do a limestone parking lot in the future, which is, which is really what the, the discussion represents here. That would represent an, an extra cost of about four thousand dollars. But it's probably the cheapest way to get this project done if, if we wanted to go that way.
That's option number one here.
Right. Correct.
Yeah.
We have a substitute motion to.
Go with option A.
Option A, number one. Uh, cost of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And that's go come out of our.
Water and sewer. Water and sewer project funds, yes, sir.
Yeah, so we got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have, uh, public works.
We're good, thank you.
You're good, Mike? Okay, I want to again, thank y'all for your, your work and support, not only with the parade, but, uh, with what we did in opening of the Quarles House. That was a great success. Uh, recreation, Bob, do you have anything to add?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, building office, Mike?
We're good.
Okay. Uh, municipal court.
Everything's going well. We're good.
Glad to hear that. You're br- bringing in the, the speeders. Okay.
I got one coming down my street that needs to be.
Harbor hair, you got anything?
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Could you just let us know, send us an email or something after you talk to the bait shop on what direction?
Yeah, get with.
I don't get to see Brandon very often.
I will call him.
Because of the hours I work and hours he's worked. I can mention it to Patrick if he's there.
I'll be saying, one of us is gonna talk to him.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
I mean, I just, the way I work.
Timmy or I, or both of us, we'll talk to him tomorrow about it.
Okay, I mean, I could call him.
Yeah, we can move it. And I just want to make sure we work with him to make sure he's okay with where we put it.
He's stuck down there.
I fixed to say, he, he, he held tight with us when we didn't have anything there. So we'll take care of that. Uh. Community affairs. Courtney, you got anything?
Yes, the March of the Mayors has started. If anybody would be willing to donate any canned green beans, you can drop them off at city hall. The schools are doing a competition and then the police department has a box too, until March first.
Alright, March for the Mayors. This is our annual fun, uh, fundraiser of, of canned beans. And you could drop any off at the school, any, any of the schools. Uh, the, the city hall and the police department, uh, fire department, are y'all involved in collecting and moving?
No.
You won't, you won't tell me.
If they drop them off, y'all not gonna eat them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ask the word. They've got a kitchen, they got a kitchen.
Well, that's why I'm sure you're not gonna eat them. Eat them, so.
It's now until March first.
Yeah, from, from now till March the first. And I encourage y'all, and I'm gonna say this. Our citizens, uh, every year, we turn in the most cans, uh, to be able to utilize for those who need, uh, that, that service of that food. And, and, you know, and I thank y'all for that. And I encourage y'all to continue to, to, uh, show your hearts and, and open up and bring us the beans. So anything else, Courtney? Uh, next we have, uh, Derelict Properties, scheduled public hearings. Do I need to take these one at a time or?
I don't think so, um, because we're just scheduling public hearings. I do want to make sure, noted for the record, that first one, the three twenty East Beach Boulevard, it also includes two hundred Douglas. Those are two separate parcels, but they're owned by the same person. It's one tract of land, but technically two addresses, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to schedule, schedule public hearing.
Alright, and then let me.
A through E.
Alright, A through E, and I got a motion second, uh.
That public hearing will be March fifth at five P.M.
March fifth at five. Alright, we got a motion second. Any more discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, you got anything for us?
I have one matter. Mr. Mayor, if the board would, um, authorize counsel. I have been in touch with our counsel in the opioid litigation. There's a particular, uh, defendant who's in chapter eleven and we've been requested to agree to the approval of a restructuring ballot for them so we can participate in a parcel settlement of that particular defendant. It requires just the board's approval of, of counsel to enter into the agreement.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion second to allow the counsel enter into agreement with this opioid.
No move.
Settlement.
Second.
I got a motion second. Any more discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, and I would like to say, I would like to request prayers for our counsel, uh, all the time, but especially in the morning. He's gonna be in having a knee replacement.
Oh.
Tomorrow.
I need a heavier, heavier duty.
Yeah, it's the, it's the extra big knee.
If I say you better get the double X.
Yeah.
That's triple.
Alright, thank y'all.
Thank you.
We didn't get a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
No move?
Motion second. All those in favor, aye?
All.